It's six o'clock, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Thursday the 13th, 2017. A special meeting. Basically dealing with workshop here. And I guess the first item, which Mr. Green isn't here, is Good Times in Goodrich. And I'm going to turn this over to you. So I'm like...
Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, and I skipped that? Oh, I did. Love that. Hopefully if we have anyone that would like to speak, please do. Don't get him surprised, he may say something. Sorry.
Oh, that's fine. Did you go by it? Thank you again, and I just want to kind of repeat one thing that I said when we were talking about work orders and workflow and whatnot, and I said that I was in that situation once and I didn't like it. But I found out later that we've been running a tremendous amount of harm. The same way with giving things down in writing, getting procedures down in writing. There's things that we gain from it, you're not shown even the... And I think of it as the moment, as we're pertaining to this right now, thinking of it as something that we can learn from and use. And if by chance you go into committees and whatnot, you want some public input, I'd be glad to be on a committee. I hope you get this all done tonight, though. And with that, unfortunately I have to go to a birthday party, so don't take my leaving as any comment on anything I'm not discussing or stalling on, I've got to go to a party. And hopefully you go out with me, because I have to leave at quarter to seven. It would be great if you could come up to the door at the same time. Thank you.
You going to the party with me?
Yeah.
We missed our third hour, but it's only last week, wasn't it?
Yeah, probably.
Anybody else? Now let's move on to Good Times in Goodrich. Tim, if you would.
Mr. Green was supposed to be here. He said he was going to update everybody on where everything was at. Said he had an appointment and would be here as close to six as he could. So I don't know if you're open to him stepping in as soon as he can get here. But I know we need a motion to close Erie Street and a portion of Heagle Road for the parade on August 5th.
I was going to say...
Can we do that, just move him down on the agenda? Okay.
I think he just drew a line.
Okay.
Do you think that's him? Well, give him a second.
Is that August 5th, Tim?
Yes.
Can we put a timeline on this, maybe?
I hope, see how far we go. I'd like to polish it off if we could, I don't want any more meetings, but... Let's see how long it goes.
I want to be opposed to having a timeline, I have a conference call with more cops tomorrow this evening.
Once you turn it on, it tells them.
I have to be on it by seven, you're right. So I'll have to have...
I will watch it, we can reschedule a little bit. See, that was it, so. Everybody okay with that?
We're waiting on you. You're up.
You're up.
Hi, thanks for taking us. So the record's in green from Good Times in Goodrich. Ask for a proposal to be put forth. Then we shut Erie Street like we have the last couple of years. So it's on the record, we shut it down through traffic from eight o'clock in the morning until six at night. With that, we're requesting to have additional barrels that we didn't have enough last year to totally shut the street down so that we have no injuries.
We need a proposal for, a motion for Heagle Road for the parade.
Yeah, I agree.
From 10:30 till 11:15 after 11:00.
So we're asking for permission to shut down Heagle Road for the parade from High School to Clarence, from approximately 10:00 till 11:15, 11:30 area.
From the high school?
No, I think they did it before it. Schuman, they did it on Schuman Drive.
They start blocking traffic to allow us to come out for just a couple of minutes. Everybody rolls up to Schuman and the parade actually starts at Schuman.
I'm sorry, I'm usually inside, so...
Right.
So let's go over these times again. Erie Street, from what time to what time?
Eight o'clock.
Eight to six.
Eight to six. And if it's sooner, we'll definitely pull the barrels, but we just want to make sure that everyone's free and clear and produce, so we have no injuries.
And Heagle Road from Schuman to Clarence?
To Clarence from, we'll say quarter after 10 until quarter after 11:00.
So should we just make it 10 to 11:30?
That sounds good.
We've got to make sure that the people going to the end of the parade can get through.
Right.
So I think, you know, the additional barrels and helping out with that. Last year, the village was kind enough, we had a dumpster in the park that helped to clean up some dumpsters and some garbage cans. I think Republic supplied those.
I think we had additional garbage cans down there, too.
There was a dumpster, so I don't see one down there this year.
No, I didn't know, you have to go. You didn't mention it.
What's that, sorry?
You didn't mention the dumpster on your air. Or you may have before, but I haven't ordered it, but I'll get on it.
Okay, portage, is there's one there, I don't know if it's clean or not, but we are adding additional ones.
They clean them on Friday.
Yeah, that's super.
And does the beer tent need another, or was that approved like forever?
I went through the...
We came through in February, I think February, March meeting for that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
When you make a motion, it must be all inclusive forever.
I would say so.
Until there's a problem.
Yeah.
And then he doesn't have to come back.
This basically is the same thing that we do every year, the hours and everything.
Absolutely.
So it could be the motion...
I mean, we've gone through Jersey County, we've gone through the state of Michigan, we've got our approvals. Actually, we got our license last week, so we're a month ahead of schedule compared to what we were on this year.
But the road closings, if they're the same time every year, it seems silly to have to come back every year.
It might just be that they...
Yeah, first Saturday in August, that's the way it obviously is.
They're going to make a motion for Saturday in August.
So we can make first Saturday in August.
And you can always come back for additional equipment.
I was going to say, if you have to tweak it, we could, you know, do a certain...
Well, the barrels and things like that are all things that they just need to come into the office and like that. But that's not something that's used to even in the motions, so.
And the staging begins at Schuman and then you head back to the east, correct?
Correct.
Because I think that what it was, was if there were any linkcomers, they were pulling up in there, you know, from Horton's house coming back to the west. And then they just followed into the parade.
Correct.
So I do like a motion.
You talked about the gate. We're not going to do the gate, I will do the same thing I did last year for you. The Drain Commissioner's going to take it down. We don't know how much, I don't see a sense of putting the gate up there, it's foolishness. So I can get you in here, if that's good, we'll do it the same way.
Absolutely, do the muscle, I'm getting older.
Okay, so are we ready? I'll make a motion that we close Erie Street to allow for pedestrian traffic for the Good Times in Goodrich Festival the first Saturday in August. Closing the street from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And also closing Heagle Road from Schuman Drive to Clarence for the Good Times in Goodrich Parade, also the first Saturday in August for Infinity and Beyond.
Time zone, yeah.
Unless the times were changed.
Right, from time to 11:30, the closing of Heagle and Schuman Drive.
Support them.
Gotcha. Yeah, who was hers? I think Tim got it.
You've checked with the sheriff. I hope you're on Heagle.
Set?
For blocking. I guess we will, because there's a motor stop right, we do it with sheriffs, you know.
I thought that the fire department, Freddie helped you guys on this.
We'll look for it. Yeah, I think some of it. Everyone's safety is super important to us, so we'll take care of it.
Counselor, anything else?
Are you ready to vote?
We're ready to vote.
Okay. Baraco?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
McCafferty?
Yeah.
Dick?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Have a great day, go proceed.
Thank you, sir.
Let's begin with the workshop.
You start, I'll start, sure.
You start.
All right, so first, I have to say Doug, thank you for saying learn and use, because that's exactly what I want this workshop to be. It's something we can use to learn and use for the future. I'm glad we have some DPW workers here, I was hoping we'd have more Village workers here, because it is about them. But I always think, I always think it's important that personnel is reviewed every once in a while, especially looking at this, it's been a while. So unless anybody has anything they want to start on, I kind of want to start on page four under sick days. I want to open this up for discussion. And the two things I want to open up for discussion on this is the policy states that we will not allow a fixed number of sick days per year, per employee. I am proposing that we do have a fixed number. I think this is a little outdated, and I don't know either any institution or any job where you can have as many sick days as you want to pay. So I'm opening up for discussion on what the council thinks about setting a certain timeframe. My expectation following around different municipalities is six.
Six, is that what you're saying?
Six per year. But I'm also wanting to allow to carry over three with their unused.
So you can have only up to nine in one year?
Per year. I don't think you should be penalized if you don't use them. But I don't think you should be paid for them if you don't use them either, but I do think you should be able to carry over some. Give it over to the action. Discussion.
Only carrying over already?
Now with that, is there, do you have any definition or line or excuse, to unexcuse their time?
No, I think that would be under the next segment, I don't think that... I think sick time is sick time, I mean, obviously unexcused is always going to be unpaid, right?
Just for my minute taking?
Yeah, go ahead.
Are we just going to discuss these, we're not going to vote individually on each of these, you're going to discuss them?
How many meetings you guys want to have?
I need to know how many times I have to make motions down here.
It was my understanding that this was just going to be a workshop and we were going to discuss stuff.
That's what I have.
I would say we had...
Before you.
Right, right.
I mean, somewhere outside of here.
Right, and have it go through, whoever needs to go through, and then come to council for final approval after it's been reviewed.
Once you have a whole policy.
There you go.
In other words, you're not going to vote on each individual.
Right.
That's pretty much it.
It was set up as a workshop.
I was ready to write it all down.
Like, it was set up as a workshop, not a council meeting.
Got you, all right.
Is that a motion?
Can I ask? What everybody else gets, as far as sick days is concerned, I have... You used to. No, no, you don't.
I get the six per year and carry over, I can't carry any over, so, but...
I approve four hours of sick leave, a paid period, and I carry over every ounce of sick leave that I burn.
Does anybody have a hundred?
Not to find out, but as far as carry over.
No, I'm saying, do you have unlimited sick days, can you call them for a year?
If I get the personal timing order, I'll be able to do it. But outside of that, it's on you. And they have, the county has a number of calls for your discipline.
Okay, so there's a set number.
Right. But as far as the hours, the hours are in your bank.
They have to be off eight days in order to go on disability insurance. Just throwing that out there. How about you, Jake?
Well, I'm trying to think of your ED mark, because I was always told it's on the seventh day.
It's seven days and then eight days starts off the mull.
Right. Okay. Yours, your policy's eight days for the disability?
Been on it.
Mine's, if you're asking what mine is, I have eighty hours in a year. If I don't use any of that, I can carry over forty hours, which is a week, but I can only use it for disability. That's how much it's set, and once I go past that, I have unpaid, actually a week unpaid. And then I go on disability and the disability picks it up. That's how much it's up to the championship.
Mark, you can't say nothing, you're something, but...
Suck it up.
Yes, I'm limited in sick time.
I have disability insurance, but I have to be off for fourteen.
Well, let me ask you this, is anybody opposed to having a set limit per year?
I don't know about being opposed to it.
Let me try to...
I would say like six, six, six sick days per year. And say, I don't know, I would like to see like where that six doesn't just turn into nine, you know, you know, almost a full two, maybe...
Right, because if you're banking it, then you're saying you have an extra basically weeks of vacation, and you're going to go on this. Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, but, and also, I mean, just so I have six, six days that, you know, I didn't use. So now I'm going to, I can, I can carry those over. Some, you know, some sicknesses, through no fault of the employee, last longer than six days. And, I mean, what qualifies, anything over eight days, now you're considered disabled. Like if you already have surgery and the recovery time is six weeks and you can't come back to work, you would then go on disability.
Whenever the doctor says. I didn't go on disability for my throat, I probably should have. I just took the five days that they told me to stay home. And I have it done, that was another story, whatever, I should have forgotten.
Because I would say like you get six, six, six sick days, we've got to change that.
Twenty-seven, just to make it...
I can't, I can't say it. So you have the six days, and then I would, to me, I would say carry over to the, to the next year, not to exceed ten days. So if you didn't use any of, you know, your sick days the previous year, your next year you get six, you could carry over four, so then you would essentially have like two days, a max of ten days, so like...
Which last winter, I think all of us used at one time or another, when we had that stupid cough that was going around.
Right, there's all types of like wicked, weird, weird things that happen, and I mean, and, you know, we can always, we can always caveat it with, you know, if you, if you're going to have to be off more than, more than, you know, four days, hopefully you've gone and seen a doctor and you could get a note, and you could get a note and have justification, so it wouldn't...
We already have to do that in three days.
Okay, okay, so you would already...
That's probably policy you had there.
Right, you would have the note, so, you know, I would say six days, you know, annually, and then carry over not to exceed ten days the next.
And let me just make a point here, I don't want to get confused here, right? Where I'm referring to paid sick days, right? There is a policy here that has approval of non-paid sick days. If your illness is still carrying on, you are, you can still get approved from the administration to be sick, but not get paid. Well, you know, stay home. So I just want to make sure, just want to make sure it's worded. These, we're only referring to paid days. If you, if I'm sick and I have the flu, and I don't have any sick time left, I could still be off sick with the approval, but I'm not going to be paid for it. Do you see what I'm saying? I've managed for twenty years, tons of employees, and I've never had anybody go over six paid days, now trust me, my staff, who deals with money, which is the dirtiest thing in the world, right? Disease and whatnot, and still we don't use those six, six days. But in event, sometimes you do. But that's what I'm talking about, just talk about the pay time, and you can still be sick, that's a different, that's a different subject. Does that make sense?
No, it makes, it makes sense.
And the reason why I'm doing this is because if we leave this open for judgment now with unlimited, you're leaving a lot of chance for it to be misused. Not saying it is being misused, but why have it open to the interpretation of anybody? Right? That's the whole point of me trying to...
But I didn't, I didn't say unlimited.
No, 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 that's why, that's why I made it that.
You're talking about the way it is.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, no, no, the unlimited thing, I, yeah, I would love to have unlimited sick.
My only concern is...
I'd like to have four paid.
My only concern is...
Just four hours, not days.
Yeah, four hours paid.
If short-term builders start paying until day eight.
You got the flu.
And we kept them at six. And I don't think it's fair that if they need to go seven days, that they're going to be penalized a day without pay because they're sick.
What, nine, every other day?
But that's not how it works, though, it's not how many days you're absent at work, it's how many days you are sick for. You can include your weekends as being sick, so you'd only be getting paid for the five days. Saturday and Sunday, you're still ill. That's your seventh, eighth day and you're going on disability.
But it was work days.
No. Calendar days, not that.
Okay.
It's calendar days, it's not what it is.
Okay, all right, I thought you were referring to work days.
It's the same time, time, I mean, what job? You don't have it, you don't have it, you don't get paid for it. I don't know any of the jobs that...
Yeah, I understand that, and the other deal was just...
And then you come back to work and get everything off sick.
Right, that's how a lot of people get their F M L A denied, because they're not according to the time that they're actually off. So if you get ill on a Friday after work, you're Saturday, Sunday you're ill, but you're not reporting to work until Monday, and that's when they actually call it at six, but like you're only off for one day, but you were actually sick starting Friday. That's how that system gets worked out.
So if I'm understanding you, Mr. Baraco, you want this just to reread excessive use defined as more than six per year?
Right, and then I'm, I'm in favor of the carryover, like she said, that's fine, you want to make it a max ten per year, you can carry, to have ten per year. I'm okay with that.
Okay, so if you carry over, you have ten going forward, then you don't use any, you're just going to carry over four more, and it starts at ten?
You're always going to have ten.
Yeah, they'll always have ten.
Well, it always is, they showed it as ten.
Okay.
I mean, that's, this is, you know, keep that as a note.
What you said originally was bank three, are you picking that up?
Yeah, we're going to do the four carryover, bank, and then max ten per year after the carryover. Anything else on that, extend to the next thing? In regards to documentation of days used and reasons must be maintained in employee's file, I just, I don't know, I haven't seen place file, but do we have something in place now? If I were to go up and pull each personnel, do we have every sick day written down, documented discussions on those?
For over three days?
No, it says we have documentation of days used and reason...
Personnel are in the payroll.
Well, the payroll, yeah, it goes into your payroll.
Touch on how many days are on...
So it does have the, so it does have the days used and the reason?
No reasons.
Okay, I'm going to need to hear a reason.
Not for payroll. I don't need reasons for payroll, that's personnel, that'll be heard.
Okay, I'm going to repeat it again. Documentation of days used and reasons must be maintained in employees' files. Do we have that, I'm just going to, yesterday, did we have that?
Carry over three days. Not every sick day that anybody does.
Okay.
It's documented that they were sick and they were paid for it, but the reason that they were off, no.
So does, okay, so the reason why I'm asking that is this is reading correctly, because I'm going to read it again, and I do not see, I do not see any, I don't look any...
It'll hurt, because I...
No, no, I'm just saying, does it say, does anybody say, does it, you see three days in here anywhere? No, okay. Documentation of days used and reasons must be maintained in employees' file.
So it's right there, number three. After three consecutive days, absent employee will be required to furnish a doctor's excuse.
That's a doctor's excuse.
Right.
That's totally different. So we need to eliminate that, if they're not going to require documentation of reasons for six, but I'm not going to jump to a different paragraph and say that's the same thing.
No, I understand what you're saying, you're saying anytime one day, if somebody called in sick for one day, that has to be documented in the file, so we know why.
As a boss, every time my employee called in, I had a personnel record, I'd write it down, so-and-so called in sick, done. In the personnel file.
They called in sick or for?
Called in sick.
Oh, why?
Well, if they call in...
I don't ask them why.
One at a time, please, one at a time, it's hard to understand everybody.
It's a presentation of effort. What's in the payroll?
The reason why it's not in the payroll is because what if I said, let's pull the personnel file and see if they did the six, because if you go down to section excessive use, right? I'm not going to pull up twelve months of payroll records to find out if they did excessive use. I'm going to pull up the personnel file, I'm going to pull up their sick pay, I'm going to say one, two, three, four, five, six, excessive use, then we're going to have a coaching, right? I don't want to pull a year of payroll.
You're just going to, no, then payroll would just generate a report telling you how many days off that they've been here.
That can be done, it'd be easier.
I could print that out and put it in their, but it's right there. I mean, anytime you need it, you can generate that report and get...
Okay, but I'm just, right.
How many vacation days they've taken so far a year, how many, you know, it's all there because it's computerized now, so...
Which is perfectly fine, I'm just saying, based on this personnel file, it says must be maintained in the employees' files. I get audited all the time as a bank, and they look at my employee files, and they say if it's supposed to be maintained in the file, I should be able to pull it up and pull up employees' files. If that's not being done, if we're not going to do that, if we're going to do what you're saying...
Well, if their payroll file is electronic, then it's there.
As long as it in the employees' file.
Right, then it is.
Then it is, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, is like, is there an actual filing cabinet that has employees' files?
Right.
If I'm an auditor, show them the employees' files, I'm going to say.
That's what they say, show me the employee files.
Yep, and I'm going to pull that out, and then I'm going to say, show me the sick days in the file. Then there's your issue.
No, they just show, they say, show me the sick days.
And they run it off.
Yeah, and I run it off for them, they, they've never asked for it any time.
I think what Mr. Baraco was stating is that we have a policy in there.
If you want it to print out and put it in there, or you want to change your policy, I would change the policy, because putting that piece of paper in there, that's just generating more paper for a report that is right there in your software. I can print it out, it's not that hard.
But, but the problem is, and I think what Mr. Baraco was getting at, is that this is the policy that's been in place, and if somebody wanted to afford it and say, hey, I want to see the employees' file, and specifically a sick time, what I'm hearing is that we don't have employees' files, we have systems that we can generate that information, but there's no actual file in place for the employee.
Absolutely.
Right, so I think what I'm hearing, and I am agreeing with, we need to have employees' files that are available for...
Employee file, employee file, if you employ anything.
I just don't know what corporation, do you have an employee file at work?
I have an employee file at work, but it does not contain all my time off. That's all, that's all housed in a computer database that my boss will print off if he needs to...
But you have the employee file.
Look at it. Yeah, I have an employee file that has like my, you know, my letter of appointment and, you know, all my, you know, security documents and...
Shows my employment, shows my attendance, shows my coaching, shows my disciplines, shows anything and everything. Every time I have training, I mean, it's broke down in separate...
And my employer is, they're moving away from a paper file, everything is being stored electronically. I mean, we have to digitally sign everything, everything transfers through email, there's, I mean, we're we're moving towards a paperless working environment.
Yeah, we have like electronic HR files, right? Which, I'm okay with what you're saying modifying this, I'm just saying this is all, this has got to be taken care of, this has got to be changed to either we're going to do what it says, or we're going to have an electronic system that says, this is how it pulls.
Yeah, they've had electronic systems since I've been here. It's never, well, for sick days, when they have a, you know, somebody's sick over three days, and they bring in their doctor's excuse, that goes in their file, that type goes in. But just calling in one day for, that just goes on their timesheet, they were out sick. There's no, on my end, there's nothing that says why they were out sick, it just said, took a sick day. You know, that's between them, Jackie, I just get that. So in payroll, it just shows that there was a single sick day on such and such a date. That's all electronically, I can, I can print that out. And if somebody needed that in a file, I always think of the electronic files as part of the personnel file, I just don't print it all out and put it paper-wise, like you said, we're trying to get away from that, but it's not that hard to do.
To me, I would think it would be, be better to store things electronically rather than have them... have them in paper, only because of privacy laws. I mean, if somebody were to open up a file that shouldn't be looking and all of a sudden you pull, you pull something out and say, oh, wow, John Doe has this going on. Hey, did you hear that John Doe over here has, you know, this major heart condition and, you know, he's been shoveling snow over? That's just, that's, that's privacy violations. That's, that's a lawsuit waiting to happen.
Well, but that wouldn't be available because of HIPAA laws. If you're going on that.
Well, documentation and reasons why.
Yeah, I gotta get that cut open some candles.
Yeah, I would say have, have things stored electronically. That way, I mean, people, people in the office who have access to that, where that data is housed, can pull that information. I've been, I've been involved in probably over 20 audits and it is not a problem for an auditor to say, can you run me your payroll reports? So we can look at this.
That's exactly what they do.
And I would generate my payroll reports. I'm going, I'm dealing with an audit later in August. Same thing. I don't, I don't run all that stuff because it, it contains personal information on people and I can't just have that laying around. I will give it to the auditor upon request, but I'm not just gonna print it and have it in a file cabinet that anybody can open and close and, and look at stuff that they're not supposed to be privy to.
And that's exactly why we do it. Because they broke into the office and they took everybody's social security number. So we're not gonna do that.
So I'm, I'm, I agree with that. So what I'm hoping for discussion is that we need to modify this personnel to state how we wanna record sick times.
Can I make a suggestion? This is gonna take forever. We're on the first paragraph. Can we go through this and just highlight what, the areas that you have? And then I can take it to the HR person that I got the proposal from before. It was about $700. For her to take a look at it and put the proper language in there.
Yeah.
You can, we can sit here all year and if you've got a dog and it's supposed to be an A, that's gonna get changed. I mean, I don't.
Yeah, if you just wanna make him change the proper recording structure about which has the reports at time, that's fine.
I mean, it's up to you guys, but I think that is, you gotta have somebody look at it. Highlight, you know, you've got a lot of highlights, just.
Yeah, I would say anything, anything over the, the three days currently would require a doctor's note. You know, stick it, stick it in the employee file. I would recommend putting it in a sealed, in a sealed envelope. So if somebody were to grab it, if that envelope were to get opened, get a stamp, date stamp when it was put in there. If it were to get opened, have it by an auditor, have the auditor sign that they opened it on such and such a day. So it's not, you know, it's not an breach of privacy. I would also say that, you know, first, that payroll records can be, um, or sick, sick and vacation days, however, in this section here, sick days, um, will be reported using the time tracking, our current time tracking system.
That's kinda what I had on sick time. Anybody else wants to add anything else on that? Mark, what do you think?
You?
Okay. Moving on. If there's anything that I'm missing, skipping between these things, I'm just picking out some things.
One quick thing to, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Does our recording in the payroll system allow for tracking of the sick days? Does it show something on a check stub, sick days remaining, six, you take one and drops to five? Okay.
Well, ours doesn't because it's, uh, because there's never been, it doesn't show how many are left because.
We've never had.
The reason is zero.
Right.
But it shows exactly how many they've taken so far this year. It doesn't like vacation time. It'll do that. It doesn't set vacation.
Doesn't have like a balance.
Okay. So instead of a countdown, it counts up.
Doesn't count, counts up.
That would be nice. I'll be adding a little balance and you can.
Well, it does with everything else. If you set a limit, then it'll.
Oh, gotcha.
But at, at this point, there's no limit. So like you said, it comes up the.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
To total.
We didn't need to bring computers to come for this.
Oh, no, no. It's in there. That's coming up.
You're, you're also, what, you just answered that?
Wait, real quick before we flip the page. Uh, number two on their health insurance. Those employees shall be provided with a standard health insurance package. And during our budget talks that we had discussed, um, it was brought up that our employees currently have a Cadillac plan.
No way.
It's Dante. Um, so we can, uh, when we do that, health insurance comes up here in August. I tell them when we're looking at plans, we need to see with a standard health insurance policy.
Cadillac would have dental and eye and all those other things that you all have probably. This is just a basic deductible pay at the doctor's office.
You got them down.
And then they pay.
Yeah, I've got that. But that's something we're gonna be looking at here in August or whatever, correct?
Yeah.
And, and that's what we talked about earlier, right?
Right.
Can we turn that page?
Yep. So going to pay vacation time, this is simply, um, kind of back, piggybacking off the vacation, uh, sick time. Um, I don't, and this, this is just me, open for discussion. I don't like the fact that they're penalized if they don't use their vacation time. I feel that they earned the vacation time and I feel if they don't wanna use it or if they have used it, they shouldn't be penalized for it. So I'm proposing that they're allowed to carry over one week if they need to, or in lieu of carrying over, take a paycheck for that week. Um, that's just, that's just my thoughts.
Theresa. Can I just finish that?
I, I agree with that. I guess that's good. Honestly, if they're working, it's kind of, yeah.
Now, I don't have any objection to it. Only that if they carry over a week's of vacation and they don't use it the following year, they can't get paid. I don't want them to get paid for two unused weeks is what I'm getting at. If they're gonna carry over, they can.
Yeah, you can only carry it over for one year.
Yeah. And we might wanna put that in there one year.
We have, um, a use or lose policy. You can carry over X amount of vacation time. Let's say I can carry over two weeks of vacation time. That gives me a total of one month of vacation time. The year that I'm gonna have more than one month of vacation time, I either have to, let's say I have five days, one month plus five days. I either have to use that five days or I lose that five days. So my, I'm, I'm allowed to carry it over, but if I can't carry over three months worth of vacation time, I'm either, I either have to use it or I'm, or I'm gonna lose it.
You're just talking one week carry over for the one year. That's the limit.
Yeah, or you can choose to get, or, or you can forward the money and pay for that. I just, it's their money. Uh, I think so. You know?
I'll, I'll throw one more scenario. Being on the hand, when we carry over, we have to match it with the week. And guys will do that so they can have an extended vacation that they can get the year before, if you wanted to throw that in there. But again, if you use that stipulation, you're saying if you're carrying over, then you're matching it with a week that you're getting the following year. So you're automatically gonna burn up a week because you're matching it with one you bring in there. It's interesting.
Yeah.
Just throwing that up there.
If we, if we allow carry over a vacation, that's something that we're gonna have to pay attention to at budget meetings because we're gonna have to make sure that there's enough money in the budget to cover the added cost of labor.
Right. I think those, and again, cause it's per year cycle. Yeah, I hear you. Yeah.
I kinda like the idea of capital off one year with weight. Tim has proposed it though. It streamlines a lot of things. It makes it easy. It's fair.
Yeah, I might, I mean, if I got that, what I say, well, we can just take a big paycheck extra. I'm just saying.
Exactly.
Are, are, we all set with that? We have anything else?
So just clarification, so carry over or they choose to get paid if they need to not paid.
And you're only allowed to carry over the week.
One week.
I'll deal with that. Yep. Um, I'm gonna skip to page ten, let's see. If you have anything else. Uh, page ten? Yeah. Jake, can you do me a favor? On performance review, can you read that paragraph for me?
Performance review. At the village's discretion, your job performance will be discussed with employees about your anniversary day once per year. During the review, the employee and his or her supervisor should discuss employees' past performance and future expectations.
My question, uh, Jackie, is do we have any performance reviews at all for any employees in record?
I don't have any. I talked to them.
Okay. So do we have a, we don't have a performance review written?
No.
Okay. Um, my recommendation here, and I understand it says at the village's discretion, is that we enforce some kind of performance review at least yearly. I know my job is twice a year, but at least yearly. I think it's good for the employee to get feedback. I think it's unjust not to give the employee feedback because one, how do they know if they're doing a good job unless they're getting penalized? And two, how can we hold them accountable on what they're working on if we don't know where it is? So my recommendation is at least one performance evaluation per year, um, per employee.
And also in a lot of those, uh, reviews and evaluation, it adds a snapshot of how many sick days and whatnot you took in there.
Yeah, it's all, it's all covered.
It's all covered.
Who is, and I guess my question would be, and who is going to do this at the village's discretion? Uh, who, who does this, this?
Well, you do have performance reviews, right? So it'd be Jackie.
Okay.
Who does hers?
I don't think I do.
We got a volunteer. I would think that, I think that's done by the council. I mean, it's kind of what, right, the administrative kind of place.
Supposed to be done every year in June, but I've never had them.
So I, holds up, we do that too as well?
So you wanna take out at the village's discretion? Well, I'm gonna take it out, which I'm gonna say on a yearly base, and you can set it in June if you wanted to, except it'd be the beginning of the fiscal year that a, uh, performance review gets done.
That's fine.
By the administrator. I have a raise.
Is that what we're doing? Who knows? Well, cause he, and here's what I'm going with is like, will we come time for raises and stuff? I would like to see, okay, this performance review for this employee says, never misses sick day, worked great, got great compliments from the village. I don't, I'm great, it's getting a raise, they do great. But it comes to me, had 20 sick days, had this many complaints. Whatever this performance review does, that's gonna make me to, my decision if that person gets a raise, right? Um, just like it does in any other job role. So that's kinda why I want that.
Um, are, are we gonna seek to have some type of, of form that is tailored?
Standardized form.
Like that's tailored per job description? Because I think we're gonna have to have some elements and standards. I mean, you're gonna have to, you know, this is, you know, I'll, I'll use my, for example, training. I have to have, you know, 40 hours of continuous learning points in my, in my career field per year. And I have to get 20, 20 hours the first six months, 20 hours the second six months. If I don't meet that standard, I'm downgraded unless like I was waitlisted for a class and I couldn't get into that class. Well, then I can go talk to my supervisor, hey, I need to change this because they're not gonna have this class until next fiscal year. There's no way I'm gonna meet that. So, um, my performance appraisals are kind of a living document. They're not to set anybody up for failure. There's, they're there to set the employee up for success. So if we have like elements and standards, whether there's three, three standards that are, you know, expected of, of employees or whatever to meet, and they should be quantifiable where, you know, you should, you know, be able to do this, this, that and the other thing. Did you complete those?
Right. And I'm gonna give you my example for my institution that I have. We have a performance review that's broken down into five sections, right? Each section deals with a particular part of the job role, right? And in those sections, we have an exceeds, a needs, a needs improvement, right? Each section is graded. At the end of it, you get an overall rating. Did you, were you an exceeds employee? Were you an meets employee? Or did you really needs improve employee? And at the bottom of that, it's gonna have what your action plan is, what are you working on, where's your strength and where's your opportunities, right? Each job role is gonna have different five categories, right? Training is one of mine. I have to make sure training is done in a possible timely manner. If it's not, it's marked, right? So I don't know what that would look like, but I think we have job descriptions that can kind of customize that and get some.
Right. And I, I like the idea too. Like if somebody's at meeting or their expectation to some place of, of performance improvement plan. Like how, how are we gonna get you back on path for success?
Right. And, and I don't want people to think this is a negative because it's not.
It's a no, it totally is not. It, it, no.
It's always something to help you get better at your job. You know, one of my CEOs, Jamie Dimon, is if you're not, you should always try to be the best at your job that you're in, right? And this is supposed to help you do that. Okay, so.
I'm sure they have everything. I'm kind of not online.
Yeah, I forget.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I think I, I think I've seen what I was looking for in, um, performance appraisals because I was trying to cut and paste some stuff when I was working for an old course on, um, performance stuff. And there's all types of things online. I'm sure MML has got something.
And we're gonna look into this or who's gonna look into this and how are we getting these forms and where do they go from there? You can do that?
Mm-hmm.
I don't have to tomorrow.
No, no.
Tonight.
Day after Saturday.
Day after Saturday, I'll just, section one. Um, anything else on that?
No, let's move.
Okay. Um, I'd like to jump over to page 11 and 12. And this is kinda where I'm building up to. Um, this part is a policy of violations of disciplinary actions. Um, and the reason why it's, I'm kinda leading up this is right now, we don't have a system in place, right? So I'm gonna, I'm gonna highlight at number 11, falsifying village documents, including personal and time records. We all got a copy of time records today. And if you guys look at those, you can all see that they were, and again, this is just open for discussion. I'm not pointing fingers. I'm saying anyone's violating the policy. I'm saying time records are being recorded by one person.
I don't know. Couple of bunch of guys.
So is everyone's handwriting separate or regional?
Matt's doing it wrong.
Okay. So we did change that. So it's good. That's, and then secondly, I put down, um, let me remind you.
Do you want that in the person's policy?
That's what they say.
That's what I mean.
Right. Well, that's what, you weren't saying if, if they have changed what they're doing.
They have changed. Cause prior to this was, it was all done by the same person.
Right. Was it in the policy?
It says right here, including, um, time sheets, time records.
It's just a falsifying document.
Oh, okay. Right.
Well, falsifying can mean different things. Uh, in my job institution, if someone else is recording my time, that's falsifying documentation. It's not be doing it. That's in my world.
Well, this is their supervisor's.
It doesn't, I'm just telling you what, in my world, right.
Let's be explicit. How you, what you're saying. So it has to be filled out by each individual. Is that what you're saying?
Remember, the whole point of this is to eliminate human error. Okay? Cause I don't, Jackie wouldn't wanna get in trouble for, let's say, one of the employees putting something down that she didn't approve, right? Um, the other thing I have is, um.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop here. You're going back to a lot of it and filled out by that employee. And now you're gonna have the supervisor initial that or something?
No, I'm leading up to this a little.
Okay.
Yeah, I know. I know it's kind of ahead of the game, but I'm just trying to point out some stuff right now.
Okay.
The other thing I'm leading to is number 19 real quick. Um, it's engaging in work of personal nature during working hours. Um, I'm just gonna state that and we're gonna get to that in a minute. Why?
Which one?
Number 19. Um, and then number 12, and I'm gonna go back up. I apologize. Immoral or in a decent conduct while off duty or on duty, when such conducting brings a village of good wretched to public, was that disrooted?
Disrooted.
Disrooted? That's a fancy word.
Disrooted.
Okay.
Sorry, you don't know what that is.
I seriously. Um, at that point, I'd like to stop and ask you to look at your sprint phone bills, please. Um, if we could start with the one that totals $172,34. If I'm correct, we have an iPad or some kind of tablet. Um, phone for each DPW worker?
Yes.
Um, on page two, Mr. Vic, can you read to me what the data usage was for the iPad?
One point four two one two gigs.
Can you read me the data usage for Ethan?
Twelve point nine eight two gigs.
Can you read me the total text messages?
For Mr. Ethan?
Yep.
Nine hundred eighty-seven.
Can you read me what Matt had for texts and data?
Zero.
So my discussion is, I have two cell phones, I never exceed four gigs. Why would an employee need over fifteen gigs of data? Is this doing a job? This is council.
It's on the line.
What are they doing that takes fifteen gigs? Texting does not take fifteen gigs.
How long you get on the phone, I don't know what that takes.
So I'm requesting a detailed phone bill.
They pay a portion of their phone. By law.
So this use, can, this is, this can be used for personal, that's what I'm getting to?
We pay for it, uh, we're paid for it also.
Okay.
It's by law. If you're not doing it, if you're in trouble.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry. I lost sense, and what's by law?
That the employees have to pay a portion of their phone bill.
What's, okay, do you know the portion of the phone bill that they're paying? Percentage?
Twenty. Twenty dollars a pay? I don't remember. What is it?
I believe it's twenty dollars per month.
Twenty per month?
With any other phone line, if you go extra phone lines, it's twenty dollars a month. That's how my personal one is. My wife's.
Okay, well, my concerns are pointing this out, that if it's a, something, it's a shared bill. So, are both employees, because it's fifteen hundred minutes shared, excuse me, fifteen hundred shared any time minutes. So Matt's paying twenty dollars as well? Okay, then my question is, somebody, I have other questions now. If he's paying twenty dollars for the, why isn't he using the phone?
Well, that's his business.
Okay, so then my other thing is for.
His battery's broken, his phone rang out.
And I own a personal phone.
He has a personal phone for mowing, that's why. I've been using his personal phone, I contact him.
Okay, so out of the twenty dollars then, we can call this eighty-seven seventy-four, I'm looking at for the month of June twenty-third, for the almost thirteen gigs that was used. The village is paying a huge portion for this extra gig data uses, which is either video or online usage. So I don't, Mr. President, I don't know if you want to reach out, Ethan, and figure out why the gig's up so high. I mean, I, I have a shared plan myself, and the three young kids that are on it, I barely get to eat.
Can we go back? What's, is it a law that they have to have it for personal business?
What?
Is it a law that they have personal business? If this is the case, I'm going to move to that we don't have, uh, they don't pay for the plan, we get just business phones, and they can do their own thing for personal.
The reason they're paying for it is because it was told to me that they had to pay on it.
If it's a government phone, it can be FOIA'd, just so you know, the records and who they texted.
When I hear that, it, it, this is just, opens up in a can of worms for the employee.
Let me check with the.
This is because, because, I mean, I'd hate for these guys to get in trouble, and I'm, I'm going to the extreme, so. If there's a duty pic on there, and that's an employee phone, and that was under in personal time, there ain't no way to tell. Do you see what I'm saying? You're seeing a line with that?
Right.
I can, I can clarify some of this. I got that tablet. When I got that tablet, they wanted to know if I wanted one gig, whatever. I don't know much about this stuff. I just got the lowest one, the one gig, because I have Wi-Fi down there. If I use the Wi-Fi, the gig's not used. I'm using Wi-Fi. So that, that's different than the cell phone.
Right.
My understanding with unlimited, it's unlimited, okay? I have a personal tablet through Verizon, it's a different carrier. My wife has a, a tablet and a phone through Verizon, and we have a couple other phone lines down there for some relatives. I have my personal tablet, I have my work tablet, which is through Sprint, and I have my work phone, which is through Sprint. I have a Google account, which is mine, under my personal email. Everything's stored in the cloud. I'm not a tech person. When I got my new tablet, everything downloaded to that tablet. If I take a picture on my Sprint phone, it goes to my Verizon, which, don't ask me how, it's a different carrier, it's Google, I have a Google account. I also have my Village Goodrich email, which I just received, now, six months ago, whatever, whatever that was. So those pictures that, that backed up to my new tablet, which I didn't want anything on there, because that's for work, I don't want work pictures on there.
Yeah.
Go all the way back to two thousand and eleven. All three of my devices have everything on there, they share that. As far as the gigs, unlimited. I understood it as unlimited. I, if it's unlimited, when I take it home, I go work in my shed, I listen to music.
Right, so here's where, here's where.
I mean, I pay, I pay twenty dollars a month, and it's unlimited, so my bad if I misinterpreted what unlimited means. I don't know what, maybe there is a limit.
Here's where I'm getting, and this is, like I said, this is protecting the employees, and protecting the village, and trying to be transparent. If I were to pull the, if I were to pull the detailed data usage sheet, which they do have, which shows from nine AM to six PM, and I could see seventeen, seven gigs were used at ten AM. Am I saying that employee's watching a movie in his truck? I don't know. Right? So my proposal is if, one, we're opening a can of worms for these guys to be held responsible for anything on that phone. I would like for us to even just eliminate them paying for a portion of it, go to strictly, um, village phones only. Restrict the data amount, which will lower the bill, get these billed below a hundred bucks. And not have to worry about them being held accountable for something that they didn't mean to do on the phone.
And if there is a legality that's involved here, I would like you to look into that.
Yes, well, they wouldn't be paying for it.
Let's work.
It wasn't what they had to.
Any, any other questions about that, council?
I will check on that.
We still, we still requesting the, the, well, I sort of like to say a detailed, uh, monthly usage.
For how many months?
Two.
Just the two that you gave us here.
The two, okay. Because that is what I get. I mean, that, there isn't any detail on the bill, that'll have to come from Sprint.
Yeah.
Okay. You have to get it through.
So we're good on that one? Yeah. So that's good. Uh, take, yeah. Well, that leads me to the handout, which I did for you guys for T-sheets, uh, which is, I have this thing here. So what I'm proposing is, is something like this. Um, it's electronic timekeeping system for all employees, uh, very cost effective, twenty dollars per month, up to a hundred users. Uh, the great thing about it is, in our last meetings, we talked about, are we getting the most bang for our buck when it comes to maintaining the village equipment, cutting grass, the hours spent? That's a big discussion we have. What this would does, if you look at it, uh, the first page, or the second page, I should say, it allows you to, this is just an example. So it allows you to put, uh, what you're doing at what time. So you see cutting grass, you check on it, you start mowing at eight AM. When you're done, you clock off it, you're done mowing. So, and then if you're going to work on equipment, you click on it, on your app, and you start working on the equipment. You're done, you click off it, you're not working on the equipment. Okay, so each job function throughout the day is recorded for how long it took you to do that. So on the next page shows you what I'm talking about when it comes to how long it took you, is a snapshot, it's the time sheet one. So if you start cutting grass, um, and it takes you, and it, and it ticks you, right? It takes you two hours, and when you're done logged off, what this does, on the third page, it takes that data, and this is a really bad screenshot, but you can't see it, it actually puts it in pie graphs of where the time is spent the most, and what's taking the longest to the shortest, it's all color quoted pie graphs. So as a counselor, as a village, we can then better assess, instead of this, where are we spending our time? And is it worth that maintaining equipment that we're constantly fixing? Is it worth inputting grass or contracting? I don't think this does that for us. And then the last sheet is just the bottom paragraph. Not only does it do that, but every two hundred feet that you move, it tracks your GPS location. So you can see exactly where you're cutting grass, exactly where you're maintaining the equipment, exactly where you are throughout the entire day. So there will be no open discussion to the public to say that these guys are not doing their job, um, at all.
Does it turn off when they go home?
The GPS function is turned, is turned offable. Once it turns off, offable? Once it is turned off, it automatically clocks you out, so you're not paid. So if you go to lunch, you can turn off GPS, you're logged off, off GPS, and it also locks you, it also takes your time sheet and times you out for that.
Does it also show you when you turn your GPS off, where you're at?
And it prints the time sheet?
It does a ton. It does the time sheets.
I just wonder how I'm getting the time sheet.
And, and, well, the great thing about this is that, I, I don't just recommend it for these gentlemen, I also recommend it for the staff, because you can log into, not, not on your phone, you're logging onto your desktop. When you log in, you just go to the T-sheets, put your thing in, click logged in, you're logged in. When you're ready to go to lunch, click log out. Not only.
You don't log out for lunch.
Well, good. Log out, you gotta go home early. The great thing about it is, we'll keep those balances for you, sick days and.
You know how many different things everybody in that office does during the course of a day, to have to.
No, no, I'm talking for, the, the administration, you're logged in, you're working up here, right? You're not doing nothing.
Right.
These guys.
They're out, yeah.
Doing different functions.
Okay, you can change the.
That's a little different, that's a little different. I mean, the cost of repairing a machine versus you constantly reading a book is two different things, right? So that's, you guys are just a log in, log out function. These guys, it's how we can track the job performance and see, okay, we spent six hundred hours last year cutting grass. Does that make sense to pay six hundred dollars for cutting grass?
Okay.
Just to do that a little bit.
Their time sheets require. Okay, well, we'll have to look at it, because all I need, when they turn a time sheet into me, I don't need to know where they were twenty-four seven. I just need to know how much of, how many of these hours go into major roads, how many go into minor roads, and how many are just paid by the village.
Right.
So that I can, so that Jackie can do your Act fifty-one, um.
Exactly.
And your state reports.
That's going to go to the second sheet.
So it has to, it kind of has to go in with that, and if it's, does government.
This will do that where you're.
Yeah, there's a government section, yeah.
Then it will probably go.
Yeah, and you can, you can add as many categories as you want.
Right.
So when they log in, you can make it that, that's the category for.
So you can put major road or minor road.
Exactly. I, I see where it's going with that one.
And they, again, when I first started this, two months or a month ago, and I said, look, if something were to happen to these guys, I don't know, someone dies, someone falls down in the river, I don't know. And you were to say they were at the park from, for six hours that day, who's to say they don't get subpoenaed to say, you're at the park? Yeah, this is going to save their butts, because we know where they were at all times, no matter what, when they're working for us.
Right.
I guess the best thing also is the fact where if you're working too much on a piece of equipment, it's going to flag you for, this time if you're other piece of equipment.
Thank you. Yeah, because these guys are lots of.
There could, there's pluses involved.
There's, these guys can log in under that maintenance equipment and say, worked on, and they can put in a worked on, I don't know, wow, whatever. That, so this is just, you know, open it up for discussion. The, the amount that this costs is twenty dollars per month, even if it's thirty dollars per month, versus my proposal of, uh, limiting the cell phone things and getting that down to a hundred bucks. We're going to save money along the way. Could it be more efficient?
More efficient. Uh, and this is something you can work with them to get them up to speed on.
Yeah, I talked to the T-sheets representative, uh, they will do, um, uh, an hour session. They'll, they'll basically walk boards you, walk you through it, they'll ask you, what do you want to do, what do you want to do? They'll retract, and they'll set up the whole system with the administrator, um, and get everyone, like, rocking.
Does it turn on when they?
The GPS, or the, the app, yeah, you just, they're.
On camera, they don't have to worry.
And when the, when the employees log in, and say, if you were to log in on your desktop, it actually pins your IP addresses. So we know if the employee's logging in from home, if they're logging in from the village.
And question, what's the cost for this?
Twenty bucks per month, and there's some addition, and that's up to ninety-nine employees. Uh, so it's very inexpensive. I'd say it's going to cost us between three twenty, twenty to thirty bucks a month.
So you wouldn't have to fill out a time sheet then?
Nope, this is it.
You just have to coordinate it with.
And you can print off your.
Can you put on what chalk you're in?
You can put anything you want on there.
Also, your BSN A software, we have never purchased the time sheet portion of their software. So we might look into the cost of just adding what they already have, which is government equipment software. They have a time sheet.
Yeah, I mean, if it has, my biggest thing is the GPS and the structure.
Right, absolutely.
I mean, this is ranked one of the best. I know a few contractors that do painting and, like, construction, they use it for their teams, and they love it, so it's just.
I have a, I have a question. On the front here, this, in the middle, where it says twenty, twenty US dollars, says four dollars per user per month, plus sixteen dollar base fee per month. So is it the sixteen dollars per month for the service, then four dollars plus each employee who's using it, so?
Or are you going off the platinum?
No, no, that's right. Right here, four dollars per user per month, plus a sixteen dollar base fee per month.
Twenty, right?
Yeah, that's, that's, exactly, the twenty, the twenty per, um.
And that would be for one user.
It's good for two to ninety-nine.
That's how I see it.
Yeah, and we can get more clarification on, what, you know, once I have a set number of employees.
People come for hours? Based on one user in your account, you have a business level monthly plan, that's one user.
Okay, so.
That's one user.
How about council members who are employees? I mean, are we going to do? Well, no, it's just that, when I'm doing it, I, I follow my weekly once a year. When I'm just being, taking your time sheet, I just keep track of the meetings that you attend.
I would think that's key, and that'd be easier, because you know.
That would still be done separately.
It's going to be about fifty bucks.
Because when I go on my report, I have support fifteen employees.
Either they're, you got your laptop, and Ron would have to log in and.
Yeah, right, as we can. I'll let Polly, because she's already got a laptop, she's always here. We log their attendance in, send it to us.
Council, what do you say?
Come for it.
Uh, I, I think this is something we should look into, everybody?
I think we can look into it, but I think we need clarification on this twenty dollars. I think it's going to be more, I think it's going to be more, way more than twenty dollars. When I say way more, I think it's going to be about forty, fifty bucks a month. And then twenty bucks a month for all employees.
Clarification, let's look into.
Oh, yeah, it, it's a good start though.
I'm just more concerned about the timeline, you know, if we're going to move on, that's, it's time.
That's all I had, from my.
No, is that, um, that number twelve, number nineteen, I'd like to know what that means.
Oh, number, well, this is, what, what do you think now?
Immoral or decent Catholic, while on duty or off duty?
Well, this will eliminate people saying, hey, this person was sleeping on duty in so, so parking lot. No, they weren't, I really have proof, that's kind of where that lies.
But it says on.
On or off duty, it says.
Yeah.
Right, so.
This was written in ninety-eight?
Right.
For one person?
I can just see how that can be interpreted if, um, when I go to the phone systems and say, okay, uh, Ethan, I'm not, Ethan, I was saying you did, I'd say, Ethan was at the bar drinking, right, on duty, um, then someone were to ask for FOIA or something, we could say, well, right here, he wasn't, because that day, he was right here, not there. That's, that's where I kind of play those two together. That's your murder.
Any, any, anything else? Oh, yeah, because I'm, I'm trying to move on to the next item.
Right, no, I just, um, I'm leery of terms such as immoral, indecent, because my definition of immoral and indecent, I can guarantee, is different than Mark's, than Jake's, than Jackie's, than Pat's, than, we can all have different definitions of immoral and indecent. While off duty, I mean, we're, we're all grown adults, we should all know how to act and.
You have to be careful, there's a lot of people on social media that say stuff shouldn't, or some, we're all, I'm not saying like, right, you're going to do this, but they do it throughout the day.
Very, very true, there sure are.
You don't want somebody who's convicted of a felony, convicted of a work.
There, there certainly are people who say some pretty nasty things on social media, but that's a whole, that's a whole nother topic.
Immoral and indecent is because illegal is another.
Exactly. Exactly, I would, I would say.
Illegal kind of.
Things like that, meaning there's.
Are you just questioning the fact that?
I just, I just don't, I just, yeah, I just don't like the verbiage there. I think we need to look at new, at new words.
That may be a change too, when she takes it to, like, she's been updating, I know what's been.
I mean, this was done in nineteen twenty-three, so.
Right, and then, so, any further comments on this idea? Why not? I'm sorry, I have comments.
No, yeah, and, I mean, with my employee, I'm not allowed to have certain things on social media at all. And I, and if I'm out, and if I get DUI or something like that, I'm, even though I'm not working, I can get terminated for that.
I have to self-report if I, if I get in.
Right.
In a situation like that, but I don't conduct myself that way. But anyways, next, what number are we on?
That, that was it.
That was it.
Are we set for it, Mr. White, if you want, please?
All right, I had something under leave of absence without pay.
Page ten.
Page ten, leave of absence without pay. And, you know, and it, it might be for a select few, but, you know, if somebody's going out on a medical leave, why wouldn't you be able to, you know, your vacation time is your vacation time, number two, may not utilize accumulated vacation time for a leave of absence. You know, if you choose to continue to be paid on your leave of absence, and burn your vacation time, if we're going to pay them a week of carryover, that's their time, they earned it. it, that, kind of along those lines, shouldn't we, shouldn't we strike number two? If they're going, if they're going out of a leave of absence.
If, if I may, if it's for a medical, that language is actually there to protect your vacation, because if you're going out for a medical, you're, well, I would have to assume if you're off that period of time, you're gonna be on some kind of a disability, still getting paid, and that way you don't have to burn your vacation while you're off. That's actually more of a protective language.
They usually though, doesn't kick, short term doesn't kick in until day eight, you know, if you wanna burn the first seven days to continue to be paid.
So you're saying that if you've exhausted all of your sick time, you want them to be able to allow them to take vacation time? But the problem with doing that.
This is just like.
Right, but I'm trying to clarify this for Mr. White, the problem with doing that, now your, your, your time before your disability isn't coded as sick, it's coded as vacation. That's why a lot of the time you can't do that. They, they don't want you to burn that. So if you're going out ill, if it's an ill situation, everything has to be coded, the sick time.
I, I see where you're going with that.
And then if you take it as vacation, now your timetable starts over before you go on disability, that's more protection language, so they don't have to burn their vacation.
Right, it would be okay after the fact, if you ran, I don't know, do you ever, I've never been on it, do you run out of disability at some point?
Six months.
After six months?
Twenty-six weeks.
I would.
I probably, that two weeks of vacation wouldn't make a big difference, but you could use it at the end without any.
This is a leave of absence to go to 10 buck two because of your brother. I'm assuming anything to do with being sick.
Right, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm reading this as like a, a last resort. Like, I don't, I don't wanna use, I don't wanna use my vacation time to go, you know, wherever it is that I don't really wanna go. And I'll just, I'll just take leave without pay because I've got, you know, a family vacation scheduled later in the year that I, you know, I'm gonna use my time for. I mean, this, I mean, there, you can't, you know, you can't use, it's saying, like, if you choose, as an employee, if you choose to go on a leave of absence without pay, you're, you cannot use your sick days or sick leave, so you're not getting paid. Yeah, may not accumulate, accumulate, you can't use your accumulated vacation time. You're, again, you're choosing not to get paid. You, you shall not receive any holiday pay because you're choosing leave without pay. You're choosing, I'm, I'm not getting paid for any, I'm giving up all benefit to my employment.
This could be in conflict with the family leave. I'm not sure, that's one of the reasons to go with that.
Does, does family medical, does the FMLA apply to employers with, under, what is it, 50 employees?
Yes.
Because I've, I mean, it's, it's been a while, I haven't had to.
I haven't talked into policy.
Okay, because I've, I've worked for an employee, like, you know, who had 10 people, and there, there was no family medical leave because they didn't have 50 employees, they didn't have to comply.
Or this new thing, or after?
It, it, I, to be honest, it's, I don't even really remember what employer it was. There have, they've all been together.
You like your question, so, you know?
With, yeah, with the FMLA, well, what I know about FMLA, it's only excused you for your time off, you don't actually get paid for the FMLA, it's only for excuse time off. And if you're taking it for personal reasons to help out a family member, you have to have the supporting documentation from that doctor saying you are the caregiver to, in order to get that FMLA approved. You can't take it to go just as a sick uncle or something because, you know, you feel bad for him or whatnot. You have to have the documentation proving you're going down to perform medical assistance or something of that nature for him.
One guarantees your job for you, I believe, unless one doesn't.
I see this as half check, you look at maybe updated version of the absence without pay from H R.
And then she would come and talk to you too?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Now, to receive $1,000 or $400? Okay, I'd just like to look at it and write up our comments and see what's legal and not. When I read the information about this year, last year, it was like 700, 700 a quarter dollar. FMLA was 4,000.
Oh, cut that one out.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's $5,000, I have to see, I don't think that.
Do you see it coming back?
Yeah, I got it. You want a motion on that before, I got, I got a couple things to do, you wanna go over? You wanna go over those first, or you want to motion?
Can you read?
Look, we're okay with this?
Motion after saving $1,000 to have it reused by an HR personnel.
I will, so we'll get it after Carol immediately. Do you want me to?
Veronica, yes.
Like.
Yes.
We have to. Yeah.
All with.
All right, don't, don't close them yet. Number six, if you could please, I might have to do something.
Page six, is that where you're going?
Page six. Number eight on retirement says during employment, the village will contribute an amount equal to 5% of gross wages paid to the employee to the retirement account. I believe going through the budget, Jackie was up to 8% for, for the retirement. And I had asked, I think most of you guys seen that email of the motion minutes that supported that 8%, but I would like her to seriously look at that because I don't wanna fall into discrimination on why some people only get five and some people get eight because of a certain age, which was stated before.
No, that was unadmitted to my contract to go to 8%.
Okay, so we can have that.
I'm working on all of that.
Yeah, I agree, but again, if that's, if the documentation supports it, that's gotta be updated. And then, one more question, I don't know whether this would be, I do wanna go over these job descriptions real quick, but I know a few residents have stated driver license checks. I don't know if you want that for the job description, but I think it probably should be in the personnel policy at least once a year. I would like to see.
I'm out of the space. I guess I can have a question.
I think that comes from your, your.
Every quarter or something.
Commercial license, does it not?
No, we, you have to. It's signed around the program, which we have.
But we, we get that every year, and that's in file, right?
Yeah, I get it once a year. They just send me something that says their license.
So we can review them as well?
Yes.
Also, that, through the page?
I'm good with this, I just wanna go over some.
And I can't get a CDL if you have a certificate, can you?
I don't know, I have a clear driver.
I've never had any certification, so.
So for the job descriptions, I know we got some for the D P Ws that I was contesting that we never noted or made a motion on. I have the older ones here, well, I had one, I think I gave Mr. Rock a one to look at. And it was, it was attached to the 2014 Pay and Benefits Survey that Jackie has sent out, I believe, when we were doing the budget. Ethan's name's written on here, I have one for Matt as well. So I didn't know if you guys wanted to adopt the ones that Jackie is trying to create, is not trying to, but that is presented now. I think that was partly what this discussion was, was for.
I could be, adopt it at the next meeting if that's what you wanna do.
Yeah, if you guys wanna go over and look at it, my, going hand caution here, the more stuff you put in here, the more you're setting up for failure. So I, I mean, I kinda liked how the old ones were, but my biggest concern that I have, it's not my biggest, but it's a, it's a big concern. Supervision received work as performed on the general direction of the street administrator, a member of the village council. And I'm wondering, and I wanna know why, on the new public work for the superintendent, that's not on anymore. So I remember countless times that councilman Maury constantly said, you know, I got my guys over here doing this, my guys are doing a good job, my guys need this, whatnot. And, you know, he was kinda giving the direction, at least that was my understanding and my perception of it, of what our job needed to do. And I'm kinda wondering why on the new ones, that's, pass has been taken away from Mr. White.
The resolution to appoint Mr. White as the street administrator gives specifically what he is, he should, whatever he's supposed to be doing.
I'm sorry.
I didn't write the other ones. How about this, these? It should include, you know, a lot more things in that.
So are you just posing, like, take a look at an idea to make him, so I can?
Yeah.
I mean, I can put in there that he, what the resolution says, which we talked about before.
Can, can I ask, was that not Gordy Bachmann's position?
He was APW supervisor. Yeah, I took over for Gordy.
Yeah.
So he was not the street administrator, he was the super APW supervisor.
The council member is the street administrator by resolution.
Was he on the council too?
No.
No, he wasn't a street administrator.
He was just the supervisor.
I was a street administrator. The street administrator is a position that the state requires to have a council member or an elected official sign your Act 51 report once a year.
And now they got another two, yeah. I can give everybody a copy of that. I mean, you passed the resolution, I can give you another copy of that.
What, what resolution?
To appoint him as street administrator, it gives the.
No, 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 right, I'm not, I'm not discarding that. What I'm asking.
It gives what he can do, what he's responsible for doing.
All right, what I would.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, but I would, I'd like the language that the old ones had, the work is performed under the general direction of the street administrator. I want that, I guess what I'm saying is I would like that added, if we're going to go over the new public works superintendent and the public works lead, equipment operator, maintenance worker, I would like that, I believe it's under Ethan's title. That'd be under Ethan's job description. Instead, says reports to the village administrator, says reports to work as performer in the general direction of the street administrator.
Well, that would make him a department head.
Yeah, you can't do that. Mr. Maury volunteered his time to do everything he did. He wasn't.
Legally, he did not be on council and pedal department.
So you'd have to have, make sure that the wording, I don't think you could use that word, wording, because that would put him in the position of a department head, and he can't hold that position and be on council.
Is the point to have the APW to report to Tim?
Yes.
So is there any other language you could use that they can report to Tim?
Maybe that person would know.
Yeah, that's bang it out. If we can use some language that says that, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just like the old language. I mean, again, I would ask, you know, I would, I would like to adopt something, it's figured out which one we're doing going forward, but look at this, you know, and it's, you know, and I'm not trying to discriminate anything here, but it almost looks like we're adding a lot of job functions to justify wages and benefits, which is fine, but to the point, I don't want to set somebody up, because there's some things in here that if somebody wanted FOIA, that Mr. Ethan would have to be liable for, I don't, you know, I don't know that that actually gets done. What I'm getting at, more falls under Jackie, and it has to do with budgets and whatnot, budget reports and all that fun stuff.
Do you have specific things in here?
Well, for budget reporting, repairs and administries, department's budget, participates in long-range financial planning for equipment replacement and capital project, tracks projects and activities collect, they have repair reports and completes and, and all that fun stuff, blah, blah, blah. And what, I guess when I'm getting that, I have never seen that come from the DPW. And I know that's something that this council has.
We have that meeting two or three times a year, you've been one. When I get ready to do the budget, the first person I sit down with is Ethan. And we go over what kind of equipment he might need, whether it falls under property maintenance or, you know, whatever.
Gravel, the old salt.
We're on a five-year rotation, new trucks, that kind of went by the wayside. He's the first person that I talk to.
I, I think you're, you're untarred it though, with having us looked at this entire thing. And I understand what you're saying, you know, because of, it does open him up to a liability.
Well, we did put some of the things in here because of what people in the community accuse people of and say, so some of this stuff is right off the list.
But if, if somebody else is going over and looking at it, proving that we have concerns about what is on this page, maybe they could pick out some things and say, you know. And our, I, I hope your concern is to protect, protect, yes, that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
And if that's what we're doing, I, I think it's wise that they look at it. If we can protect him, let's protect him. Wouldn't make sense to me.
I don't know if that lady looks at those types of things, but I can, you can find out.
It's a start, it's a start.
I, I forgot this, can I just, I don't, don't forget. I want a phone installed in the DPW with an answer machine, and a policy states that you have to respond back to any resident's complaints within 48 hours.
A hotline, an old-fashioned hotline?
I don't care what kind of it is, can it.
I think, I think we talked about.
We talked about, and I forgot, I was gonna bring it up, and I totally forgot, I just, it hit my brain.
I've been getting a phone down there, and it's very expensive. What is wrong with the way we do it now? It is more control over things getting lost, things not being passed on, the way we do it now, because it goes in his box, the message and the, I get a copy of it, and I text him, and he goes over it, just like today, Diane Warren called, she said, well, she needs to be trimmed, he was over there in three minutes. If he has to be out in the field, and he comes back there from crack ceiling or something like that, at 3:00, 3:30, they're full of sweat, they're, they're not gonna go look at that phone.
The 48 hours is, I think that's a pretty generous amount of time for him to respond to also.
Yeah, that's why I put 48 hours, and they don't have to.
But they respond, it's three to five minutes normally. See, I'm not kidding, maybe from you guys.
Is it an unreasonable request, let me ask you? Is it really unreasonable?
I don't, I don't care, I, I, I don't care, I just say, I get text messages from the office, I have, and it's right on my phone, that.
Well, and you have four people answering the phone in the office, they are not in the office, they're a working DPW.
Can I ask you a question?
They aren't an office personnel, so we make the messages and give them to them.
You take the messages and put them on paper?
Yes.
What, at the bull locker desk?
Well, I don't know. But if he's not in his office, he's not gonna get that phone call.
I don't, I don't.
And if he's on vacation, or they're out, they're not gonna get a 48 hours.
I manage over 1,000 customers, and if I had to rely on my assistant or someone to write down every message, and she happened to spill coffee on it, and that million-dollar customer gets pissed off, that, that, that million-dollar.
We don't have a million-dollar customers, and.
Hold on, hold on, timeout!
Where's the message?
Timeout!
Timeout, Mr. Rock, go get me.
Hang on, I was speaking, I'll let you speak. If, if, if a million-dollar customer gets mad because I didn't call him back, who am I gonna blame? I'm gonna blame the personnel who's supposed to write down the message and get them fired, versus I come back and check the machine and say, hey.
His phone number is public.
Okay, so what's wrong with having a voice machine that's public to the residents that can call, make a complaint?
Can you just say we were gonna have, they were gonna have cell phones that are gonna be, they're gonna be village phones, correct?
We're talking about residents being able to call.
What residents complain?
What complaints, I'm kinda really curious.
It doesn't have to be a complaint, it could be anything, it could be they want their street fixed, it could be they want something fixed, they could be reporting a deer dead, they could report. They could report someone's walking down the street, and they, I don't care what it is, they have a system to call.
Yeah, the cell phone that you told them.
That's fine.
That is their, that they have.
That's, that's fine, then.
Their number's public.
That number's public, and they call, and they have a responsibility to call back within 48 hours, and it's recorded on there.
Yeah.
Right, why would we have a phone in an office when nobody's in when they have a cell phone in their hand?
If he.
They can leave a message.
He goes on FMLA, who's gonna check that phone for him?
Who's gonna, the one in the office?
May I get a message from the office, just like, you know, I'm on vacation, I'm on the job.
I'll have Jackie walk down there and do it.
No, you won't.
No, you won't.
No, no, that's not gonna happen.
If, if we switch to phones that are non-data phones and they're just, I mean, why couldn't it be like any other maintenance-style phone? My, my husband, he has an emergency call phone if he gets emergency phone calls in the, in the evening. If we're on vacation, he's going on vacation, it's your responsibility while I'm gone, he passes it off. So his phone now becomes, you know, Ethan's phone would then become Matt would, you know, looking all bad with two phones, you know. I am so important, I have two phones.
That's what I'm saying, is we currently have cell phones. There's no reason to have a phone in an office that nobody's in when they have a cell phone on them.
As long as the system's set up where the residents can call and we can guarantee that it's being checked within forty-eight hours and called back. And if it can't be done, if that person happens to get in a car accident and their phone's there, there's gotta be a backup plan.
It is.
Well, I don't, no one told me a backup plan.
Longer than it needs to sit in the box and if it's said to have missed.
Again, it's paper.
Right, it's paper that's in Ethan's box and paper that's given to me, that I pick up for vacation.
Okay, we're down to the final minute. Council, what do you say? This is what I want to hear, is what does the council want to do?
I see, I see both sides of it. I see having a phone down there, but, I mean, the more I think of it, I didn't have a house phone for years because I never, one, I didn't, I didn't check it, I didn't look at the caller I D, I didn't really care who called it. If anyone was gonna be calling me that I cared to talk to, it was gonna be on my cell phone. The cell phone numbers are published for everyone to call, then I guess I don't see-
Maybe that would be a good thing for your newsletter is-
Right, it could be, it could be a newsletter thing and it could be, you know, it can be a, you know, if we have, you know, the, the sheets, you know, hey, you know, you got received an incoming call. And, but, I, I see, I see both sides of it. I mean, if they're, if they're out doing things and they're not gonna get back, back to the office until-
Before you that one.
Right, so it's Friday, I call, I call six o'clock Friday night. By, by Monday evening, I haven't checked it, checked the machine, now somebody's upset because there was a weekend, so there's gonna be more than forty-eight hours. If there's a weekend plus a holiday and somebody calls within that timeframe, there's, there's room for, there's room for error there too. But I see, I see both sides, I see the benefit, you know, if they're down there, the phone rings, hey, oh yeah, there's a dead deer on the side of the road, yep, we'll go take care of it. But I also see people calling the village, I've, I've called the, I've called Jackie, hey, there's a huge pothole and on my road, you know, my, my car's gonna sink in it. And within, within a matter of hours, these guys were out fixing my, fixing my road. And thank you guys, lots of compliments from the black cell phones.
Go ahead, so I think you're missing my point. The point is accountability. The point is, is if administration employees up there screws up because they didn't take a message properly, it's on them. Having to eliminate human error where it's centralized located, just like any other business that you call. That eliminates him getting yelled at, saying he didn't, I called his cell phone, he never called me back. Well, you know what, we have a dedicated line for that, we have it recorded, it eliminates anybody from getting in trouble, eliminates the, the constant rumbling from the village if there isn't. If people say, I don't hear anybody, I'm out in the streets every day and I hear stuff all the time, so I don't know if you're not hearing it, I don't know.
I'm gonna hear it.
I don't really care if you hear it or not, I hear it, but I'm just telling you, this will eliminate that.
Not necessarily with the landline.
We're running out of time, let's be orderly, let's finish this off.
Not necessarily with the landline, I think you would get better luck of tracking with a cell phone. Because you get a detailed bill of incoming and outgoing phone calls. If, if I say I called, look at that detail of phone bill, maybe I didn't call, maybe I'm a big liar and I'm just wanting to complain. On a landline, I can say I, I called fourteen times and who's to say that I did? There's no tracking of incoming calls.
There is now, these days.
On a landline?
Yes.
I, on my landline, I don't get, I don't, mine, I, on my landline, I don't get, I don't get detailed reports of incoming phone calls. I think you're gonna have, I think you're gonna have a better, a better chance of tracking with, with a cell phone than what you are a landline. Maybe I'm wrong.
I think it would be easier to respond.
Okay, I just want to know, we can, we can pick this up later unless you got something real quick with the number three five.
Well, I want to go over the, some job descriptions on the building on the street real quick. Not to cut you off, but we're right over. Are we looking to adapt this to at the next meeting, because you may have amended that here August fourteenth of two thousand seventeen?
I'm hoping. My regular job description was written before I became the clerk, so I didn't know I was becoming the clerk, so I just updated it to have clerk.
What page are you on, Mr. Green?
It's like four or five things.
Village administrator clerk job description.
Yeah, I just put that on there, hoping that it-
And what, what are we gonna do?
It's, uh, yes, Mr. Brock, go ahead.
I got it, I see it.
Okay, so just a couple of things on here real quick. Uh, number eleven, show work with the village, legal council on matters needing legal attention, all such work must have prior approval of the village president or village council. Um, I would like to scratch out the village president and have it come to the village council so that we all know the legal matters are being attended to.
I can't wait.
I, I was gonna say, yeah, and, and I, I definitely gotta tell you right now, there, there's times that we need an answer and to get everybody and to con, no, that's-
Well, which is fair, but that legal, the legal requests don't come to us, we don't know what's being turned to the, to the, for the attorney on. You're getting the information, we're not getting the information.
And you're welcome to come into this office anytime you want, weekly, daily, hourly, and, and know what's happening and the intricacies of, of your local government. And I, I think that would help keep you up to speed as far as what is happening.
Right, but on the change-
I made that comment earlier in, 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 uh, last December or earlier this year, and it's important that you come into this office, you are the eyes and ears of the residents. Sometimes there are things that we, we, you know, Jack, can I talk about, when we pull the trigger and we, we call on legal matters? Uh, any, there's not, that's about the extent, that's as far as it goes to get the information.
Any legal matters that are worth bringing to you, I bring to you.
Of course you do.
Because you have to make a motion on it, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that. Some of the other things are clarifying, I gotta call them right now, clarify notice.
Yeah, I, I-
I mean, they're fifteen-minute phone calls.
You're, you're bogging down the, the wheels of progress with, I see it.
All right, number fifteen, is responsible for preparation of the agenda, I'm not gonna do this whole thing, but it says we'll have a minimum of three days prior to the scheduled meeting, I know we talked about having that out, I would like to have that changed for seven days.
No. I have them ready by five o'clock on Tuesday and nobody comes in to pick them up. A lot of people don't come in until the day of the meeting and pick them up.
And if anybody would like to know, I keep track of it, so I'd be happy to share those, those dates with everybody.
And then number eighteen, issuing sewer permits, and if you look under Tracy, she also issues sewer permits.
It's a deputy clerk.
Okay, so why are we having two people issue sewer permits?
Somebody's not there.
And I'm just saying, just, what I'm looking at this is that we have a, a possible motion that's gonna be going or looking to raising sewer tapping and sewer fees. And all these job details that kind of got, we shuffled around, if you will. I'm seeing the reasoning for sewer work on these job te, uh, job details is so you can actually take money out of the sewer fund and help pay for the wages and stuff like that. So I don't understand why we have two people issuing sewer permits.
Well, the clerk is the person that issues the sewer permit, Tracy's a deputy clerk, so she also can, she's also the deputy treasurer, so she can do things for Noreen. I'm not in the office all the time and she's working with the building stuff. So I rarely, um, I get them ready, sometimes I put the packets together for her, um, if she's not there, for building permits. Now, we're a team up there, we work together.
Okay, I'm just asking, and then two more quick things, Ms. Dick, coordinator, why wouldn't that go under the D P W supervisor, since he's the one coordinating the digging and all that fun stuff?
It's a computer program that I have to-
Computer program, or the phone number you just call and say, this is who's digging and whatnot?
Well, he does that, but I have to.
That just notifies who's digging. I, if I have to call for a signpost or something, I call Ms. Dick.
And then I have to verify it.
And they changed the, how it works now, anytime somebody calls in a staking request, it goes to the office now, just so they're made aware. I don't mark utilities, we don't have utilities.
No, I know you don't do that, they come up, do we have any private utilities, other than street lights?
No, we don't have-
It's train on Pontiac Street.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, store drains, but those aren't-
No, that's not, that doesn't stop, that's not the years.
I mean, sewer the county maintains, so they, you know, that's marked by them, sanitary.
Okay, then the last thing on last page, in addition to the salary compensation, administrative budget shall include and allocate some for attendance on job-related conferences and meetings. Prior to the attendance approval must be received by the council, a member of, uh, since I've been here, did anything come to the council for approval before she goes to any kind of, uh?
I've never come to one since you've been around and gone through them for five years.
Okay. So like your nine-one-one and that kind of stuff, those aren't, you don't, those don't have councils, those are just the general meetings?
I was appointed by this board to go to that meeting.
Right.
And the sewer and the tack, I don't just run around for that.
Any other questions?
That's why I'm asking. Ten minutes over, council, I don't suck. Uh, do you have, I'm a gem, is there a public comment, I believe?
I was, I don't, I'm just kinda curious, solid Genesee County Road Commission, as I can call Swartz Creek, I didn't, you know, I gotta complain. Usually when I call the Genesee County Road Commission, it goes to the name-based Flint or the township supervisor, like here, Atlas Township would be, you know, who's on the charts there, I doubt, you can just call their garage.
Uh, with that said, there, you can, you can look in the yellow pages, governmental, governmental pages, in a lot of places, you can call D P W garages directly, if that means anything.
We used to have a phone on Gordon's here, but he didn't answer it.
I, I, the whole thing we talked about before, I, I think this can go anywhere. Now, I think that's something we can think about, talk about, and have them look in.
Over a thousand dollars, that phone in there. For the year.
That's what I'm saying, you can't just call.
For a hotline?
For the year, it's a monthly charge. Plus I have to put a separate line down there. Well, let somebody else take it over there, look at us alone.
No, and there's not, there, they, it was gonna be expensive to put an extension of what they, you have in the office in this service.
They don't want that.
And, um, no, and if you're gonna, the regular line, yeah, they're gonna have to run a-
That, that's something we can consider.
And they have cell phones.
Where's, where's the network interference? Yeah, do they have email too, I don't know.
I do, yeah.
Yeah, they have the-
You can go to goodrich.com or something.
We'll close it up, but just like at my work, I have a, I have a desk, I never have to travel, but when they call that, automatically that routes to my emails as I got a call, but I'm just saying.
Where's the, just a quick question, where's the phone box at outside of, on the building? Your phone box, outside the building? Where your dial phone comes in from?
Tell me where.
It's right on that side, so you already have the service line already arranged, I don't know where the thousand dollars would be, you'd just be turning on, activating that line.
For a year, I'm saying.
Yeah, for the- She's talking about like for-
For the phone, whatever.
Right, you're talking about the monthly service.
To get it hooked up to-
Well, there's, let's just-
Separate numbers, so complaining.
I was gonna say, we're, we're, we're not certain, we're just talking, let's look into it, those are your, that's your homework, there's no public other, public comment. What should we do here?
Are you studying another meeting or you wanna wait till I get through this lady and then?
I think that would be important.
Nobody, nobody wants to, you know, support that motion.
I'll support it.
I, I think it is information before we can go forward, I mean, and that will work.
For qualification for the D P W job descriptions and the administrative clerk job descriptions, that's gonna be on next month's budget?
I do.
I know, they did not, yes, they did. If we have any questions or concerns with, with you guys.
I will call before the meeting, make sure whatever you want on the agenda gets on the agenda, she can, she can get that information taken, we'll go from there. Then, uh, you, I-
I can email it too, if you can, I can, I can. I can email it, please. Email it back with a great question, if you'd like to explain what all that is.
Yep.